All right, we'll begin our meeting by reading the agenda. The board should read through the agenda. Scan, check, and strand any discussion. Call in favor. All right, at this time we'll entertain public comments. This meeting is held in public according to the old meeting laws, not a public education meeting. As the board, we value input from the public. Please correct your comments before the education. We ask that you leave your comments to three minutes or less. At the three-way mark, we will politely thank you for your comments. Please come to the microphone or the table, state your name and address for your work clerk's record. At this time, three members in the committee would like to speak.
First, I would like to tell a story to all, not only the board, but those who choose to listen. There was once a soldier in a POW camp. One day, the guard, camp guard said to the man, "You two have, you have two choices. Either one, you face the firing squad tomorrow, or you can go through that door right there." The man asked what's behind the door. Guard replied, "I have no clue." The next day, the man decided to face the firing squad. A secretary who overheard the conversation asked a camp officer, "What's behind the door?" Captain replied, "Freedom." You may be asking, "Why did you tell me a story?" Well, a story told that we are afraid of the unknown and would rather face what we do know. We constantly say this is what other schools do and what others are like. The Athenians did not say no one else did this, so why shouldn't we? It won't work. Or why should we? It won't work. The bravest are the ones who roll the dice and play the unknown. Whether it works out or not, you can say you tried. We must try something different and not do what others do, but instead, what we feel is right. What I'm about to propose may or may not work, but I am willing to take that step into the dark. If it be by myself, then so be it. I propose that student senate representative, send a representative and have a spot on the board. A few weeks ago, I took a survey for myself. I didn't hire someone or have a spot, or I'm sorry, send it through email, but I personally went to the classes and asked these questions. I asked over 100 people these questions, and their results were surprising. To the question, "Do you believe students should vote on matters of education that affect them?", I was surprised that 108 out of 109 said yes to this question. This isn't anything but the voice of democracy as speaks. If the board should ignore this and we should not act this as a, act like this is a republic or a democracy. I also asked if they would rather have a republic system or a democratic system. To my amazement, of 109, 25 said republic and 84 said they would prefer a democratic system. I also asked these people if, given the choice, would rather the school board continue to make choices for you, or rather, the community, including yourself. I hope this tells you all that the student body is full of surprises and sees their voices as important as those in the community. Of 112, 105 said they would rather the community vote. The other seven that the board should, said that the board should continue to vote for us and the community. It was once said by an entrepreneur, "I choose not to be a common man. It is my right to be uncommon if I can. I seek opportunity, not security. I do not wish to be a kept citizen, humbled and dulled by having the state look after me. I want to take the calculated risk, to dream and to build, to fail and to succeed. I refuse to live from hand to mouth. I prefer to take the challenges of life to the guaranteed existence, the flu of fulfillment, to the still calm of utopia. I will never cower before any master nor bend to any threat. It is my heritage to stand erect, proud and unafraid to face the world boldly and say, 'This is I, I have done.'" You showed up because you are building a business that you can say, "I did this. This is my dream." We must take the calculated risk, share our failures and successes, and I leave you with these words, hoping to have made a change, but proud that I stood and said these words. That's all I have. My bad. Zachary Tice, and 126 Ridge Road.
Hello, my name is Rachel Graff. I live at 4292 County Line Road. I am a junior at Wayne Central High School, and I have been involved in the music program for as long as I've been in the district. From my years participating in concerts, solo fests, all county festivals and trips, I believe that I have created some of the strongest friendships and student-teacher relationships that I've ever had. I can say truthfully, I would not be the person that I am today without this program. The proposed schedule change at the middle school threatens to decimate the core of the music program by pushing fifth and sixth grade band out of the school day. In the current middle school schedule, if an eighth-grade student chooses to take the advan, take advanced biology, and they also take band and chorus, they have to choose one ensemble to drop from or take after-school chorus in order to make room for a lab period. Speaking from personal experience as a student who had to make this decision in eighth grade, it was heart-wrenching. I had to choose between two ensembles that I love dearly in order to maintain an impressive academic resume. After-school chorus began to conflict with sports, upper-level classes, and other extracurriculars, and I began to realize that I needed this time after school that chorus was taken away. A parent on the OneWayne Facebook page brought up the point that, "Don't school sports start at 3:00? Don't students, students have time in between to do their work?" This isn't entirely true. The athletes must be on the field ready to go and practice at 3:00. This is without the time it takes to change, walk up to the fields, and prepare in other ways. With this in mind, think of the athletes that would be participating in after-school band and chorus. It takes approximately 10 to 15 minutes to get instruments tuned, warmed up, and ready to play. The middle school dismisses it 2:15. Add the 15 minutes of warm-up time, and the athletes that need to leave early for practice around 2:45, and they have less than 15 minutes of full rehearsal time. Not only will performance quality go down, but students will eventually have to sacrifice one elective that they previously wouldn't have to. There are also students who don't want to or are unable to stay after school due to family issues or transportation. Overall, there is no clear positive outcome for moving the classes out of the school day. Band and chorus are core classes according to New York State standards that students receive grades for, and by pushing them out of the school day, it creates a feeling that almost makes these classes seem like they're extracurriculars. There is no longer the obligation to attend class, as this class is no longer a part of the school day. As a program, we are constantly complimented on our musical achievements and stunning performances, but the proposed schedule change stands in the way for future Wayne musicians to reach the level of excellence that we are known to achieve. As you come to your decision, please keep in mind those who are striving to become the well-rounded students and what's being taken away from them as this program is being delegitimized. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gabrielle Zanolovek of 7278 Peartree Meadows, Ontario, New York, and I'm a sophomore here at Wayne. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the majority of the student body. On Monday, the 24th, some students and, and myself met with Dr. Calvin to discuss our thoughts on schedule changes, advisory, and communication, among other things. The student body would like to express their concerns with the changes and possible negative effects they could have. Many believe the new schedule, with the absence of advisory, will cause stress and worry on the students and teachers. We fear individual help will be difficult to seek, as proposed learning labs can easily be packed. After-school is filled with teacher meetings, clubs, and extracurricular activities, making it difficult to find help without advisory. Usually, decisions to reschedule and rethink school scheduling can take up to three years based on recent studies. We worry decisions have been made too quickly without any student input. A major concern many have seen is the lack of communication. As we hear the proposed changes throughout the school, many kids want to say, want to say, "This is, is our education." We feel our input has been forgotten until teachers recommended that the board meet with students, which occurred in the past Monday. We feel decisions have not been based on what's best for the students. I thank you for this opportunity, and we hope you have heard what we had to say. We look forward to your input. Thank you.
Board. Like... Danwood, 4309 West Walworth Road, Mass. Eden. Board, like many Walworth residents, I think back to that day many months ago when you voted to close the lone Wayne Central School in Walworth. I think about such reasons as, "Closing Freewill will allow us to have a central campus." I think about one board member's statement such as, "I don't care about towns, I care about the school district." I think about how close-minded that reason is and how ignorant that statement was, was. I now fast-forward to the last board meeting, where there were discussions about how to improve the remaining Wayne Central schools and how some board members visited neighboring schools. How we need to update our schools and get them into the 21st century. The word "Google" was used, like a style that we would explore. So I decided to try and ponder, what does Google mean to me? To me, the word "Google" means that location is just an eight-letter word. Nothing more, nothing less. It means that I can tour Venice from my phone right now, or from the comfort of my home. It means the sky is the limit on what I can learn, no matter where my physical location happens to be. Now, I by no means live a Google-type of life, but I do work for a global company with almost a dozen locations around the world. I think about the number of suppliers and customers that I have in even more locations. I think about the amount of emails, web conferences, and phone calls that I do on a daily, weekly, monthly cadence, and the individuals in multiple locations that that exchange of information involves. I think about how location really, truly, does not matter in the global world that I live in, and most definitely, the world that our children will be thrown into. I now think about myself as a taxpayer, who is supposed to have the nine of you looking out for the best interests of, of my children, and for that matter, my community, whether you think so or not. I think about the actions many months ago and the dialogue just a couple of weeks ago, and I'm worried and concerned. I see ourselves on a ship without a captain right now, because that action and the dialogue contradict each other. Location was important months ago, but now we are exploring updates where location will not matter. As a taxpayer, I demand a vision for this school district, because I do not see it. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Belmore. I live at 267 Burr Road in Ontario. I have a daughter in this school district that has an IEP that states she has an auditory processing disorder with adults that have neglected to properly handle a bullying situation with her, and has been accusatory about her with me. It has been going on for most of the year. It has gotten to the point it is affecting her health, both mental and physical. She was told to report it. After reporting it, the bully was, has gotten, bullying has gotten worse. At one point, a DAS form was left out on the, out on the desk for students to see that my daughter had filed a complaint and was retaliated on for it. I wonder if there's legal ramifications for that. I was just told about the DAS Act in January or February, despite multiple reports of problems and visits to the school with the same group of kids. Not one time has this been fully explained to me, our rights, et cetera. I am told that we should have been offered a resolution meeting with the kids and the parents, but have not been offered this. My oldest daughter was also bullied seven years ago before she graduated, dealt with the same thing, where she did not want to go to school. I'm doing the same thing with my daughter, where every Sunday night, she's crying, and I'm trying to explain to her that things are going to be okay and ignore it. How long can kids ignore that stuff and not, not have any help with it? She reached out to WBE Radio, to Terry Clifford, and explained her situation seven years ago as well as her sister's right now. And this is what Terry Clifford wrote back to her. "I cannot tell you how many times I have heard this about this district. I'm not sure what I can do, but I am giving it some thought. Please stay in touch," which is what we will do. So, and I'm listening to kids come up here and ask why things are being cut and you're talking, and I've not been to these before, and you're talking about cutting time blocks that they need to study and, and go to people, and you're going to take other teachers away, some of these teachers these kids go to for this stuff. And you ta, which is not enough people to deal with this stuff that's going on now. And you're going to take more of those people away, which leaves even less resolutions for them and people to go to. That's all I have.
Hi. I'm Darlene Dietrich Lombardo. I'm here on behalf of my two sophomore children who can't be here tonight, because they have other commitments. They are concerned about music in our schools, so I said I would come and, on their behalf. I was a music major in, at Wayne, music and math, and had I not been a music major, I would not have gone to college, because I found out when I was in college that I was dyslexic. So, I never read a book in high school, sorry, Mr. Miller. And I faked my way through it and still was on the merit roll, because luckily, I was smart enough. Without, then I went on to get my elementary degree, so I've been a music teacher for three years and a fifth-grade teacher for 22 years. And I also finished my administrative degree as well. So, it can be done. But without the music program, I would not have done it. So, my kids are concerned about the fifth and sixth grade being after school, and that, that's going to conflict with other things, because music people are generally in dance and other things that are right after school, so they can't be in both. I actually had the same problem, and in 10th grade, music, chorus and band was at the same time, and if any of you know me, you know singing is my thing. So, I chose chorus, but luckily, I played French horn, so Mr. McClure said, "You can come back next year, because we don't have enough French horns." Otherwise, I would not have been able to do so. If it weren't for music education, like I say, I would not be here today. So, my kids want me to make sure that I let you know that how important it is to them. My one son is going to go to school for music theater, which I wish I had done 25 years ago. So, I'm all for it, and if he... I just can't tell you how much music means to them and to me. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Good evening. Melissa Edwards, 1653 Brick Church Road. On behalf of the high school staff, we would like to congratulate Mr. Mike Pollan on the outstanding achievement of being named Region 11 Secondary Principal of the Year. Mr. Pollan puts in countless hours every single day to our school district to make our school better and our students safer. He stands behind his teachers and truly knows each and every single one of our students here at Wayne, and holds all of us to high expectations. Our building has thrived ever since he has come in. To say Mr. Pollan is an asset to our school is an understatement. While he hasn't done it alone, Amy Shannon, Stephanie Miller, and Derek DeMas have also been amazing leaders that also should be recognized as well. That being said, the high school staff members are extremely disappointed that there hasn't been any acknowledgement whatsoever by the district on webpages, emails from our superintendent or our director, Amy Gebhardt, who does all of the things. There hasn't been anything on the signs out in the front. I don't think many community members know about this at all, as we had found it on the thing. That is an outstanding achievement. He has made our building so much better by being in it, and there is a potential that he might be leaving soon. It's very disheartening to hear and to see, and I don't think he gets enough recognition right now for all the fabulous things that he does for our district. And I would hope that soon, maybe, things can be shared, because he is a fantastic leader in this building and continues to push kids to be better, to stay safer, to make better choices, which at this time, some things haven't been going fantastic, and he really has been a strong leader. So, I really hope that we can get some press out in some way, shape, or form to give him the acknowledgement that he really does deserve. Thank you.
That, that's, that concludes the public comment section of the meeting.
One last quick comment. Hello, my name is Joyce Bacher.
Hold on, Joyce. This isn't, this isn't, if, if we're going to extend the period, we have to have a board motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get up quickly.
So, that being said, is there a motion to extend the public comment? Dennis?
Hi. Am I good, hey?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hi, my name is Joyce Bacher. I'm a community member and a teacher at Wayne Central Middle School. I live at 2051 Bailey Road. I just wanted to come and thank Dr. Calvin. He came to our school, our middle school, and we really had a very productive, positive discussion, and I really appreciate that and want to thank him. He had to listen and learn, and we were able to really give some of our concerns, and I just wanted to reiterate that to the board and let you know we're very thankful for that. And some of our concerns were communication, scheduling, the middle school concept, there's more and more. Programming, and programming. So, I just hope that he shares those with you, and I just want to thank you, Dr. Calvin. Thank you.
At this time, do any board members have any comments? Jeremy?
First, I didn't know if I was going to be able to thank this person, but I contacted her and she said I could. I want to thank Nicole Odell, a person that I've known since school. I went to school with her sister and her husband. We don't see eye to eye on what's happening in this district right now, her and I. However, she has gone above and beyond spearheading a pen-pail program between the OEOP and Freewill students to get kids to meet each other. And I just want to say thank you, because that's something that our teachers couldn't take on, our administrators couldn't take on, with all of our transitions, and that's something she has taken on, and I'm going to get the number wrong, but I think it's somewhere around 130 kids-ish right now that she's got, and they're all matched for grade level, grade level, that they will be able to see a familiar face next year when everybody comes together. A couple other things I have. I wanted to talk a little bit about scheduling with everybody, because we've had discussions about the schedule. It's not a new issue with us. I was on the board five years ago when Matt and I came on, and that was one of my biggest things, because I had a nephew in school who had to choose between programs, whether he was going to be able to try something new or not, and that's why it was a big push for me, to see if there was a better way that we could run the programming so kids could take advantage of more of our opportunities. And I think we've done that. Just over two years ago, we were given a board presentation. It was a very thorough presentation about the benefits of block scheduling, but it didn't compare blocks to the periods, and now we've found that we are going to be able to give our students an opportunity to take an extra class every year, which is phenomenal. That is possibly an extra college class, possibly a tech kid taking a business class, or whatever it might be. I might not have had the opportunity last year to try a class, but this year I'll be able to, because I have an extra space. And the kids will get those choices. And on that, I'm, I've been following social media, no matter how painful it is for me. Coming into the election, there is much information that's being broadcast and unchecked, and unfortunately, some are taking the misinformation as gospel. Just this week, I was following social media and found a few things incorrect and took upon myself to correct those with information that we have been given multiple times. Most concerning to me is who is spreading some of this misinformation? Because we're coming into an election, so as I've done every year, I'll say that vote for whoever the people think they want to vote for, that's fine. But do yourself the favor of finding out the facts, because we know amongst us, there is much information that we're not allowed to share with the public. Much of the public does not understand that we have information that is illegal for us to share. So, I've been on the board when there was no information given out to the public, and now I'm on a board where we try to find ways to get out as much information as we possibly can. We've worked tirelessly to do this. So, I just want to say, if a community member claims that the administration or the board is hiding something, don't take that as truth. Call, call and find out the answers for yourselves, because the information that we can share will be shared. And it's been frustrating to me to see that people are putting out information that is absolutely false and backtracking when the truth is put out there. So, I just wanted to share that for those of you who are not following the mess.
Yeah, I've been working with the junior high kids on the TSA program that, or the TSA competition that they're going to be going to this Friday in Oswego. I've been working with them on their CO2 cars, and in typical fashion of kids, they wait till the last minute to finish things. They're in the crunch right now. Hopefully, tomorrow night, we can get everything finished up. Also, with Mr. Pollan, that award is probably the highest award a secondary administrator can get, and it's put out by the School Administrator Association of New York, and I'd just like to congratulate him also. That's it.
I just want to, I don't know who, who selected Coach Boone for tomorrow night at 7:00, but I've done a little checking, and I think his presentation will be worthwhile for motivation and teamwork and racial divide, and I don't know everything he's going to speak on, but I do know that for those in the community, I think it's great that our speaker this year is being shared with the public. I know we always have had a speaker, mainly at the high school level. My daughters actually shared with me, when they saw that this fellow was coming, that when they were in high school, we had the father of Rachel Scott, who was the first victim at Columbine, come and speak, and how moved the kids were. So, I, I'm very appreciative that the district is offering profound speakers to come and speak to our students, but at this point, to be able to speak to the community, and being that we've invited other people in other districts, you know, the coarser part of BOSCEs will alleviate the cost, and I know I've extended, you know, an invitation for myself with a couple other people from other districts to come, and I'm really looking forward to it tomorrow night, so.
Just real quick, I just want to wish Kathy and all of our other administrative professionals just a wonderful, happy Administrative Professionals' Day, even though this is the official date. Every day that they are working, they work tirelessly to keep our buildings and departments running, and I just sincerely thank you so much, and to all of them who are listening or watching, just for all that they do. They, they keep our buildings running, and they are unsung heroes. So, on today and every other day, thank you. So on today and every other day, thank you.
Tim. There seems to be some misunderstanding of the role of the Board of Education. The role of the Board of Education is not to represent Walworth, or Ontario, or Williamson, or Webster. The role of the Board of Education is to represent Wayne Central.
All right, this time, let the superintendent share his report.
Our administrators can join us, please, at the table. Dr. Syracuse, Michelle, and Phil.
All right, so first of all, let me start off, as we typically do, with highlighting some great things. You've heard some great things already from our community and some of our folks, and want to highlight some great things happening in some of our schools. First, we want to send out a congratulations to Ontario Primary School. Recently, they raised over 14,000 for this year's Heart Americans, the American Heart Association event. So very proud of the students. They did a great job. The Heart Association folks were there to receive the donation. It was a really nice day, so very, really proud of our students with regard to that raising of those funds. Also want to recognize the High School Select Course, which received a gold medal at NISMAs Major Festival. Really proud of those students as well, doing a great job and representing Wayne Central at NISMAs. So really great, very proud of their accomplishments. What I'm going to do now is shift a little bit, board, and I want to share a little bit. You heard from some of our staff members, some of our students already, about the recent Listening and Learning Tour that I did across the school. So at our last meeting, I shared with you that, as you know, we were enacting different transitional items, and staff have already begun to start to work towards meeting one another, connecting with one another, preparing for next year's changes that will be occurring in the district. And while we've been doing this, please understand that the merger process, as you all know, doesn't always go as smoothly as you'd like for it to go. I've talked with a number of superintendents, as I've shared before, a number of people from across the region, outside the region, who had to merge or consolidate schools or reconfigure schools. And what I've learned from them is that there are no perfect consolidations, there are no perfect reconfigurations, there are no perfect mergers, right? But one of the things that we know that helps to make things better is to really take a read at the temperature, really sit down and listen and talk to people, understand what's happening, and if there are some changes that need to be made, to respond to those. And one of the things that we did learn, it looks like our screen went up there? There we go, okay, is that amongst some of our concerns, I heard from our recent union folks, that there were some concerns rising amongst staff. And after hearing about some of the anxieties, some of the concerns, some of the frustrations, what I felt was really important was that I got out and really went out even more to meet with staff, to meet with folks, to kind of see what's happening, to understand and to engage in dialogue, and to really, really get a read of what's going on and try to really support staff in an even greater way than we possibly could. And so I basically went out to do a listening discourse, and we called it Listening and Learning. The goal was for me to hear from staff, and then also for me to learn how they're feeling, and to use that information to help gauge future decision-making, and to really inform the processes that we are undertaking. And again, the goal was to listen and learn from the stakeholders, to hear how they feel about the transition, and to gather feedback. First, let me thank all of our staff. We have a number of staff who were here tonight. We had a number of people who participated, nearly 300 participants. We had people who came in small groups, people in big groups, people who came one-on-one, folks who stopped me in hallways, to share their feedback about our transition. We had over 20 hours to just go out. Each of the sessions, we had 17 sessions, excuse me, 19 sessions that we had, each were at least an hour. Some were a little less, some were more, depending on how much time people wanted to talk. And we really spent a lot of time, not only did I attend, by the way, Dr. Syracuse also attended with me, Mr. LaRouche, who is not here tonight, also was in attendance for several of the meetings. So we had a number of us out just hearing how people are feeling. We started, of course, with our instructional staff, and let me go back. We invited all of our staff to come and talk with us, not just instructional. We had instructional and non-instructional. We talked with our administrators, and while having those conversations, there's a very important voice that we certainly didn't want to leave out. We had a, I had a staff member who shared with me, you know, have you talked with students? And I really didn't want to leave them out, so we set up times to meet with students as well, particularly our secondary students, our middle school students, and our high school students. Great meeting, lots of information, actually from everybody who was a part of the process. And so I'm going to share with you some of the things that I have learned. Now, one of the things I want to make sure we give full disclosure on is that I'm not able tonight to give you everything out loud in this presentation. However, what we have done is we've compiled some of the real main concerns that I heard, and there were a number of things. There were concerns, there were suggestions, there were ideas, and we won't give all of those tonight, because there's over 90 of them. However, what we have done is I've compiled that for you in a report, you all have a copy. I have also shared this report with our union leaders. There, I see two of them here tonight, but all of our unions receiving copies of it, all of the members certainly have access to it, nothing is hidden away. So I want to share with you tonight, but I want to make sure you understand that everything, all the things that we got, all the ideas, we did not, I won't be able to do those tonight. However, I did take the themes, and there were some real common themes that I heard no matter where I was, and I'm going to share those with you tonight. And I will also share with you that tonight, I'll be providing some of the responses that I am, the ways that we're going to be responding to some of these items, and also next steps we'll talk about as well. Okay, so let's start out with some of the concerns and suggestions that I heard. So right off the bat, one of the big things that I heard was that there was some concerns around the new schedules. So the schedules, a couple of things came up. First of all, at our elementary schools, K through 4, our teachers met with me and said, hey, listen, we typically have had a 45-minute schedule, where specials basically have gone for 45 minutes. And then the proposed schedule, the final piece came out at 40 minutes. Is it possible to add in the extra five minutes? And what we did actually in those schedules, we put in some extra time around transition, which actually caused it to go to 40 versus the 45-minute timeframe. Greg, or Joe, please make sure you correct me if I'm wrong, I want to make sure I got that right. So after hearing from the staff, we recognized easily, that was an easy fix, and we've already said to the staff that, yes, we can change with the, adding the five minutes back in. So that's what we heard about K through 4 schedules. That five minutes makes a big difference, and people really wanted to see if we could, if that was possible, and we said, sure, we could. With the 7 through 12 schedules, there were some questions about, again, why do we need to change the schedules? Why do we need to have, you know, middle school and high school having the same schedules? How can we better accommodate programmatic needs? So a number of those questions, the first two particularly, so we've kind of really talked a lot about why the need for the change for the schedules, really around efficiencies, really we're trying to be able to share staff, and really the study has really, there's a whole section that deals with more time connecting with kids, the whole section that's there, in response to those questions. But there were some real general concerns that people shared with me. They talked about planning time. You know, if we're going to be asked to do more with some of our kids, you know, and really teach a couple more classes here or there, you know, how can we get additional time? And we really need time with regard to the planning portions. I heard loud and clear, planning was important. The second thing that I heard across the district was around some of the things that you heard tonight, health, music, lunch transitions, those things were concerns to people. Let me be very clear, I am, and my staff, our team, in no way wants to harm any program in our district. We're very fond of all of our programs, we're very proud of our programs, and we want to, to the greatest extent, make sure that each program thrives. So hearing about health at the eighth grade level, particularly hearing about music at the end of the day versus before the school day starts for these particular students, or during the day, rather, as well, hearing about transitions for kids between classes and lunches are very important pieces that we heard loud and clear. Also, we heard a lot at the high school level around the advisory period and learning labs, and, you know, how will learning labs support students either in the same way or better than students are being supported? And we also heard about advisory, how really advisory makes a big difference for many of our children. It gives them extra time, extra supports for their students at the end of the day. So we heard all of those concerns really loud and clearly around the schedule. And I'm going to go to the next page, let me move it. Okay. We also heard that some staff felt that some of their ideas had not been fully considered during discussion. Some of the secondary staff also shared with us that they had some ideas, some additional ideas that they wanted to be taken into consideration. You know, I will share with you that in, across all of the district, looking at some of the processes that were undertaken, there is disagreement around whether or not we really fully considered all ideas. So on one side, we hear, well, yeah, we did see and really try hard to hear all ideas. Some of the ideas just would not work because of state laws, state procedures, and then operational needs here in the district. And on the other side, well, we heard that there are some other things that we've shared that we don't know if they really were taken a great look at. And then, you know, we had some people say, I have some ideas that might help. So let me be clear, first of all, I want everyone to know that all ideas will be considered. I have asked for people, if you have ideas, to share them with us, and we will take a look. Why wouldn't we, right? If there's a way to make things better for kids and make things smooth, we will certainly consider ideas. So we've asked people to share with us ideas. We received an idea at the high school level a couple weeks ago, and we just received an idea, a couple ideas, at the middle school this morning. So we're going to look at those ideas, we're going to take some time, at least the next 30 days. We're going to really sit down, and we'd like to have some ongoing conversation with our staff and discuss those ideas and any others, and in the meantime, because we need to make sure we're ready for next year, we're going to start to look at building some of our schedules where we're at now, but if there's some ideas that can come to us that we think might work, then we'll really go from there. We had a staff member in one of our meetings who did mention, you know, there is some anxiety around the schedules, there are some concerns there. Some of the concerns we're talking about really are based on stuff that we really have not vetted yet. And so one of the suggestions was, maybe what we should do is try to build the projected schedules and see how those schedules actually play out, see what the concerns are, and we agree. And we are actually starting that process now to see what works and what doesn't work, what's a problem, and we're using that information in addition to the information that staff have shared with us to help inform the process around the schedules. We have some ideas around planning. We certainly understand that staff need to have some time to make sure, adequate time to plan for students' needs, and so we have some ideas around that. But what I think would be best is that we come back to the table, that we sit down with some of our folks, and we're going to do that, and that we consider and have more dialogue. We're going to take at least the next 30 days to start here and have some conversation with folks. So we'll be back to talk about schedules, board, before the year is out. We do want to make sure we have our schedules in place, whatever they are, for the next year, we want things to be smooth, but we need to take some time, and we're going to take some time and have some ongoing dialogue. I want to again, thank staff for their time and their feedback around the schedules. The second theme that I heard about was the maintaining of program and of staff. Let me be clear that we are committed to maintaining programs for students wherever we can. In addition to maintaining programs, as I've shared in the past, we're also interested in adding program wherever we possibly can. As you've seen in our discussions over the last couple of weeks, we have come up with some other ideas that we believe might enhance our programs, and we'd like to continue to do that for our kids. Our goal is, again, to offer more for students wherever we possibly can. Now, one of the things that I heard is that a cut in staff means a cut in program. I understand that perspective, but I think we also need to see both sides of that. In some areas, I do want to be really honest with all of us. We have some areas that we have a little bit extra on. We're offering more than what is norm, and we're doing some really great things, but we have a little, our study has demonstrated, we have some extra, more than what is really necessary and needed, and we have to be careful around that. And so there may be some things that we may have to tighten our belts on, that we may not be able to provide as we've done in the same way, but we'll still do our best to provide those things. So there may be some programs that we may not be able to have the same number of staff, staffed for it, but we may have to operationalize and do things a little bit differently, but we, our goal is to try to, wherever possible, to continue the great programs that we are offering for kids. I want to be clear about evaluation for programs. Okay, so this is not something, by the way, that just started when Dr. Calvin came to Wayne Central. There are procedures in place in our district, and I don't even have, in front of me, I may have them, there is an actual district procedure, and we can find that one, I can't remember the, Joe and I just didn't remember the number of the procedure.
I don't remember the number. 62, it's a 6200 series.
Yes, there is a 6200 procedure that was in place before I got here, and what it says is that basically, we should be doing like every other district does. Each year, we need to be evaluating our programs and seeing what is the interest of our students, what is the population of our students, and can we continue to offer programs for kids? Every year, even prior to me coming here, one of the things, for example, that's happened at the high school level, is that what should be happening, what has happened, is that we look at course offerings for kids. If we have 10 or less kids who are interested in a course, who have signed up for a course, what happens is, is that a conversation happens between the high school principal and the superintendent, and it's really reevaluated every year as to whether or not we offer that course for that year. Let me tell you that before I got here, that practice was happening, right? And there are a number of courses that weren't offered, or that were offered in different ways, or in different manners than the way that they currently are, because, based on the need, the operational needs, and the enrollment of students. And really, so what we're doing is really continuing the practice, and that's a practice that districts should be doing in order to stay efficient and make sure that we are meeting the needs of kids and that we're not putting more in one area or less in another, right? That practice is, happens all over the place, and we are just continuing that practice as a procedure in the district, yes.
So when you have a procedure like that, in order to not cut anything, sometimes you come up with a different way to offer it. So if a program's popular, but it's only 10 kids, you may offer it every other year or only one semester. So they still have it, but you got to, you got to gather enough kids, make enough for these.
Correct, 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 and we would be continuing that. We understand that, you know, there are people who don't want to see cuts to our programs. We are, we don't want to see cuts either to our programs. However, from time to time, there are areas that we will, that we will have no choice but to reduce in, especially if the operational need is not there. One of the things that we're going to be working hard on, go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, I want to touch on something else there, is kind of following up on what Tim said, but more importantly, following up on what one of our students just said. You said that in that procedure, it more or less, I'm paraphrasing, was that we basically, as a district, we do what every other, we do what other districts do, we do what everyone else does.
We follow that.
I would like to point out that that is a fine procedure, but I'd also like to point out, based on board years, I think, of being on the board, that we don't always do what everyone else does. There are plenty of opportunities, and I thought it was a great point, to make, right, that you don't always want to do what everyone else does.
I agree.
So I just wanted to point that out, because there are times when that is a good policy, a good procedure to follow, and then sometimes it's really great to say, I don't care what everyone else does, we're going to do what's right for us. And I've seen that, I've seen that in this district, and not just from you, you're my third superintendent, so that has occurred, that has occurred in this district, and I just wanted to touch on that, because it's a great point by this student, and I don't want that statement lingering that says, hey, we do what everyone else does, we don't do anything our, I don't know, and we do it. I just wanted to point that.
Yes, absolutely, and Phil, as you pointed out, we, as you pointed out, there are some things that we do like others do, and there are some things we go even more and above on. And in what we've proposed for next year, there are a number of things that other people don't do that we are planning to do. So please understand... So, please understand, we...
One more time.
Oh, go ahead.
Also, I mean, we're starting, we're doing change. We save some money, we got, so we're efficient with what we're doing. And the goal is to make it a better school. And there's things that we don't offer yet, and I'm sure we are gonna get input from the staff who's indifferent. What does the art department, what else do you want to do, or the music department? You know, I have been to the school and I saw guitars playing up here. I'd love to see guitar plays, that's something we could offer. There's things in the future that we can get to. We just need to get through what we're doing, move it on, and then, you can't do everything at once, but we're gonna get there.
We're trying.
Looking forward to getting there.
Okay. And one of the things that we want everyone to understand, and I heard the staff loud and clear saying, "Hey, listen, if we can maintain programs and staff, we really wanna do that." We do too. But we have to be really upfront, and we are gonna need to think about how we operationalize our programs. We may have to do some things differently in the future than how we've done it in the past. You know, our truth is, we've had some areas where we have been overstaffed. And, you know, I just, there's no good way to say that. Some things we've offered above and beyond. And we understand that making changes is really something that we have to be very careful about, take a very good look at, because, you know, we don't wanna hurt our students in any way. The repurposing and the right sizing that we have been talking about for the upcoming year, it has been challenging, I think, for our entire staff, as well for everybody in our community. And these are some significant efforts that we are looking to undertake. Please understand that we are going to really work very carefully around those. We hear the loud, the staff loud and clear, that, you know, they wanna maintain programs and staff wherever possible, so do we. But these are some things that we do have to think on and undertake. You know, the truth is, is that we can't continue to live above our means. We really, as a district, you know, have to try to live within the means. And at the same time, we need that balance around what do we need for kids? What are our needs versus what are our wants? And trying to really prioritize that. But again, let me just say, this is not an easy process, right? There are no perfect consolidations or reconfigurations. It's not easy, but I do believe that we can do it. I do believe that we can work through the issues. And I do believe that when everything is all done and said, that we're gonna be able to offer our children even more and that things will work out in the end. So I appreciate that feedback, again, around staffing. The next piece that I heard some things around was the special education piece. So I heard that there were some concerns that, around staffing, that we won't offer certain programs because of staffing. And I wanna be very clear, the district will maintain proper staffing to meet the needs of our students. If there are students who have specific needs, we will provide those needs. We will continue to meet Part 200 regulations, and we will make sure that our kids' special education, 504, whatever those needs are, we wanna make sure that they are being met. We heard that there were some concerns that staff may, may have heard that, you know, staff were being told that we're not gonna have enough staff, so you can't have that service. We wanna really clear that up. Truly, that's not the case. What we're doing at some of our meetings is really taking a good look at what are the special education needs. If the child, for example, needs a resource room program, we wanna make sure that we provide the resource room program. So resource room is where we provide supplemental instruction, reteaching, pre-teaching, extension, skill-based instruction that truly is designed to make sure that that child is able to, be able to be successful in the general education curriculum and classroom setting. And we wanna make sure that resource is really specified well and that we're giving that. Now, there are some children who do other activities we know are resource room. For one example, you know, they may be doing some extra work or whatever else have you. So we wanna make sure that the child has the appropriate time as well to get extra work done or support from that. But we wanna be careful around those IP's to make sure that they clearly specify what children need. And again, here's the thing, regardless of what has been said, I'm saying, as the leader of the system, we will make sure that if children have special education needs, that we give them the proper service that meets that need. We are, and we are honestly committed to ensuring compliance with those regulations. Michelle, anything you wanna add on that at all?
No, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that we'll continue to provide those services for our students with disabilities. And we're currently, right now, going through the end review process. We haven't quite finished it yet, but after that, we always review to see what services need to be provided. And we're gonna make sure that, as we always do, we have the right staff and the appropriate staff to be able to provide those services and programs for our students.
Yes.
Again, I'll make our plug for, yesterday we had our strategic plan committee, and the number one focus came out this year is students with disabilities and well-socia, technical status. And that's one of the big priorities that we have, and I'm sure we did a lot of the priorities this year and interlinked with wealth, as we heard yesterday, the thirty-plus stakeholders that were there. I'm sure we're gonna handle this well, and there will be no lapses in any of the programs for our students.
And just, you know, to share, my background is in special education, right? It's dear to my heart. We wanna make sure that kids are getting what they need, and we will make sure that that occurs, okay? All right. The next concern that I heard about was the upcoming new reading program. So there were some concerns shared with me about the new journeys program, that it might be limiting, that we would be moving away from common core materials, that staff will have a script to follow that might stop them from being able to be as creative as they typically are. Feedback was also provided to administrators about the program, and there was some concerns that that feedback was not really taken into account. And first, let me tell you that we are not looking to limit the creativity of our teachers. We believe, so teachers we know are really great at the work that they do. And our expectation is that they will take their background, their experience, and bring it to whatever materials that are in front of them to help with teaching, reading. Feedback from staff are very important, right? When staff share with us things, we certainly wanna make sure people understand that we're listening to them. Now, my understanding was that in this process of creating, or finding, rather, the new reading program, there was a litmus test. There were some guidelines that were utilized to decipher what we were really looking for in a reading program. Joe, can you share a little bit about some of that, some of that process there, if you could?
Sure. So, I mean, this process did start, actually, two springs ago. We had some staff bring some programs to us and ask, "Could we take a look?" In the interim, we were, prior to that, we were kinda modifying the modules that came from the state. We continued to do that in that time. And we took the following school year to do some piloting, to have some discussion around different programs. The programs came to us from staff, as a matter of fact, both in the area of reading and in math. So we used our reading and math coordinator to kind of continue the conversation with staff. At the end of that second school year, we actually had panel discussions led by teachers who had experienced the math programs that we, that we looked at and the ELA programs we looked at. This year, currently, you'll recall maybe that we adopted last spring math expressions. And so we're in our first full year of implementation. We wanted to take some more time with the ELA decision. Also, I didn't really think it was a good idea to implement an ELA and math program, 'cause as you know, at the elementary level, that's the same teacher for both programs typically. This, this spring, we, or this, this past fall, we, I worked very closely with the three principals and our ELA coordinator. We talked with reps, we visited programs, and we looked at materials extensively. And I remember, you know, Mathis asking me in the fall, "How close are you?" Well, it was winter before we made the final decision, so there was a lot of thought that went into it. Some of those criteria that Mathis spoke to, they're, it's common core aligned. So that was one of the criteria we looked at. We're not going away from the common core. Those are our state standards. So it is common core aligned, I wanna assure you. One of the criteria we wanted is, we wanted standards-based assessments to help us gauge how our kids are doing at reaching those, those standards. One of the things that was really important to our teachers was guided reading. That's a methodology that our staff feels very strong in. And for just a quick piece of that, that's working with students in small groups with tux at their instructional level, allowing teachers to differentiate and provide direct instruction that small groups of students might need. And this program provides that, for that, up through the intermediate level. We did look at another program, but the guided reading piece ended at second grade for that program. And finally, we know for our, you know, we talked about strategic plan, and that was central to this decision. We look at our students who are really soaring high, and there's enrichment and extension activities right in this program for us, for our staff, to utilize to help push those kids further and differentiate. And then there's a lot of robust remedial stuff for our teachers to use with our kids who maybe are struggling to get the concepts at the same rate or at the same pace as their peers. So it had, it had the criterion that we were looking for. We are excited about the program.
Let me, so, you know, one of the things that was shared with me was that not all staff really were on board with the program, but there's some people who really, you know, don't wanna move forward with it and was wondering if there was another option. But I have to share with you, you know, I've been at all the sites that are gonna be using the program, and, you know, especially at our elementary sites. So we had one section of people who didn't want the program, and we had others that said, "We're ready." Like, "Let's, let's do this, we're ready to go with it." Honestly, the majority did say, "We're ready." I wanna be really upfront and honest with that. And we really, I wanna be clear. One of the things that I also heard from staff is that we really no longer can go without having a program in place for our district. We need to be able to have programs that are similar, that provide same opportunities for kids from across the district. And we really need to have an aligned program that everybody's on board with. At the same time, I've heard that we also need a program that will allow us the flexibility to be able to demonstrate, you know, our expertise as teachers. And I am in total agreement with that. One of the things that, that two buildings worth of folks said to me was, you know, "Listen, we get it, we got a new program. Our biggest piece right now is, we need the materials. We need them in our hand, we wanna start professional development. Can we get them now? Can we do it over the summertime? We just wanna be prepared, so when those kids come to us on day one, they're really ready for this program." So whenever you are implementing a new program or you're implementing a change, let me be clear, I've been doing this for a while. You will never have everybody who has a hundred percent agreement. You'd love to have that. You have some people who agree, some people who don't agree. But you try to really figure out what's gonna be best for the kids, and you really try to do what's best, you know? So in this case, we're really ready. We've already started to purchase the materials, and we're ready to roll. And the program will be utilized in the fall, while not everybody feels like it may be the best one. After looking at everything in our litmus test and going across, you know, and spending some time with what we were doing in terms of piloting things, we're moving forward. And please understand that staff will be provided with the appropriate professional development that is needed. Many have asked about PD, and we will make sure they have their PD, that they have their materials as we move forward. One of the next things that I heard as a thing was the pacing of the transition. Can we slow some things down? It just feels like things are going fast. A lot of stuff is happening, and it's, it's big, right? And when we were doing the study, you know, I refer back to that piece that came from Dr. Timms, who talked about, you know, making the change and how it kinda needs to be that loud. Remember that loud, resounding noise that he talked about? And he was talking about, you know, the change. There, listen, there are some things that we certainly can slow down, and where those areas are, we will do our best to do that. There are some things, however, that we just kinda need to get moving on, because we just can't afford to just hold off on some things. Some of the things I heard about were computer programs. So this year, we put into place new computer software, new programs. RTI Direct is a new one for our kids who have needs, special needs in terms of instructional needs. We have a new Google email program, which is busy. I'm learning how to use Google myself. I will say it's different from Microsoft Word, but, you know, we've learned it, I think. There are some other programs we put into place. A new Envisions program, which is a software program for our business piece that people are now starting to order materials and having questions about. And staff were sharing some of those new programs, how it's been a challenge to learn them all. Just so you know, as we've shared with them, the problem that we had this year around some of those programs are, the companies went out of business. And so they just said to us, "Hey, you gotta try a new product, this is, this is what's offered." So we worked with our BOCs to figure out what the new products were, and then began to put those things into place. Has that been perfect? It hasn't, I would say. However, we can offer support for staff. And we've heard about the schedules, we've heard about, you know, the changes in the schools. Again, there is some changes that we know are needed, and some things that we have to do a little bit differently. We just cannot sustain all of our practices. But some of those things that we can slow down, we're gonna do our best to do that, right? And we are looking at a number of things that we may not be able to do this year, that we'll have to do next year or the following year. We do understand that Rome, that statement, Rome wasn't built in a day, we get it, we understand it. And please know that we'll be coming back to share some items that we're gonna hold off on and try to do in the near future. Dennis.
One of the common things that I've heard quite a bit is this right here slowing down a little bit, and that we need change. Well, one of the things that I've been getting is, why do we need to change? We are a successful, we are the most successful district in Wayne County. Our scores are up. Our middle school is, is a school of distinction. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
So I think I would go with the study, right? So we have, you know, a five-part, or reported-on piece that really demonstrates what the changes are, why we need the changes. And I would refer back to those pieces, right? We know that there's some things that we need to do around instruction. We know that there's some things we need to do around facilities. We have some real concerns around enrollment, right? You saw the numbers yourself, right? The entire community has access to that information. And when you go through that study, we've all lived it for the whole year. We've heard about it, we've digested it, we've understood it. I think it has clearly spelled out why there are things that we need to change. Everything in the district, however, doesn't need to change, right? And everything in the district is not. There are some big items that we are transitioning to and doing a little bit differently than what we've done in the past. But I think I would refer back to the studies and go through all of that information. And it's really well spelled out as to why there, the justification for what we have, what we are undertaking. And again, this isn't easy to do, right? This isn't something that I have come in, I have been accused by people that I've come here and just do this and then go here and there. That's just untruthful, right? These are not things that I have, that I even wanted to try to undertake with staff, with the community. But these are things that when we've finished learning a lot about ourselves, right? We clearly recognize that there are some things we need to do different. So in the study, we heard that several of the presenters say their job was to hold up a mirror and to show us the current practices and to show us alternatives and ways that we could do things better, right? And at the end of the day, why the change? It's about maintaining programs for kids. It's about maintaining the things that we're doing that's good for kids and also offering more in the future. That's why the change. And I would, again, refer people back. And I think the study really explains it very clearly, okay?
Mathis, I just have a question. With regard to the schedule, you know, when Dr. Timms did the, going back to what you said, showed us the, you know, what, what some teacher's schedules look like versus their fellow colleagues, this changing of the schedule is making our staffing a little more equitable, where we don't have a teacher with one-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-over-minutes with maybe sixty kids on a caseload. And we're offering the same programs, but we're balancing our staff and our days so that it is fair to our staff. Because if they're earning the same amount of money, same amount of years, same amount of money, one teacher should not have a heavier caseload, a much heavier caseload than their peer.
And we, equity is certainly important. We did see in the study that there were equity issues. I think we had a whole discussion, if I remember, that I even led on equity. We saw that there were some imbalances across the district, some imbalances in even some of the subject areas of coursework. You know, there was, there were some inequities. But the schedule, there are a number of reasons why we're looking at a new schedule, right? We're looking at how we might offer more to kids, how we might be able to connect with kids. We need to be able to share staff to be a little more efficient, right? And so there are a number of reasons why. It's not an easy process, I would say that. But we are committed to working through the process and trying to figure out what is the best thing for our kids, what's best for our staff, what's best for our community. Won't be easy, right? Anyone who's done this has told me it's not easy, but we're, we're doing our best, and we're, we're committed to continue to work through these. If we miss things along the way and we learn, then we will, you know, adjust where we need to, okay? All right, yes.
I think the path that got us to where we are today started with...
I think the path that got us to where we are today started as well documented.
Yes.
Basically one of the times looking at it, I mean, it started with your entry plan, that you were going out talking to people and what you heard brought back to us. So you do the studies, the studies showed us the things that needed to be looked at, we looked at them, decisions were being made, input was taken, where we're at, hopefully we're at, you know, we're in a good place to get to a better place. Xerox was successful, didn't want change. I mean, they're not as good companies as they used to be because they didn't want to change. You can always get better, it's always waiting and it doesn't always have to change, but it can be some changes and I think that's what, what we're looking at.
All right, thank you. So one of the other themes that I heard about was the protocol for resolving concerns. So in many of our buildings, I heard some things about the protocol that we put into place which is designed to resolve concerns at the lowest level of the organization. We heard some people say it's too restrictive. And let me just be clear, when I arrived in the district, there was some busyness, I'm going to be really upfront, that I'm really not used to in this role. And I noticed that there were no true clear operized, operationalized procedures in place, not for one particular group of the district, but for the, the whole district. And after researching this in terms of, you know, the history, we do have a policy. I'm not sure if you can show that, can you show that, is that possible to do or not? There was a policy in place before Dr. Kelvin got here that actually dealt with chain of command is what it was called. It's called policy 3230, it was actually put into place in 2012. And it dealt with how complaints or concerns should be dealt with in the public, right? However, what I noticed was this really, there was some confusion about this and people weren't really using anything. And so some of the things that came to me really should have been resolved at the building level. I, I saw that some things were going to assistant superintendents and people weren't even talking through proper, going through proper ways to kind of resolve concerns at the lowest level. So Amy, I'm going to try to go back up, do I just go back up here? So we put into place, after discussing with the board, together we put into place a, we call it a protocol for responding to concerns. And that protocol really kind of deals with every kind of issue that you could have and it tells the whole community how we can resolve those concerns. So it gives steps, step one, step two, step three, step four. And let me just say that this is not something that's unique to just Wayne, right? This happens in any district. There are a number of districts around us, so here's one sample of the protocol that is over in Pellmac. Here's another one that's over in Victor. What you will see is that actually the same items that they have on their protocol is the same that we have here at Wayne. And it is the same, you know, and, and other districts. Williamson has a similar process like ours. And again, there is policy in the district from 2012 that's, that deals with this item as well. So Amy, I'm going to try to go back now. So I've heard people say, hey, we don't, you know, some people have said, "I, I don't like the protocol." There are some people who say, "It doesn't really bother me, you know, I'm not a person who has a real issue with that." But listen, one, one of the things that I think some of this has come out, I've heard people say, "Well, have you told people that they cannot talk to a board member, right? That you say you can't talk to this one or that one?" I want to be very clear. So I've been doing this job now for over seven years. And in this work, I know that people live in community with board members, they go to the grocery store, they're at games, they're at activities, right? And we're certainly not into policing people when they talk with or who they can talk with and not talk to. But one of the things that we do is that whenever there is a concern that comes to our attention, right? We do, and, and we do remind people and ask them to please go back through the protocol, like, and let's try to resolve some stuff. There are people who will come to me about something that may involve a staff member. I'm going to use an example, a teacher or a teacher assistant. And oftentimes, haven't even talked to the teacher or the teacher assistant. And I will say to them, "Hey, can you, did you talk to the teacher first? Or have you spoken to the principal?" And they'll say, "No, you know, I listened to this concern." And I will ask them, "Can you go back and try to talk to them first?" Why? Because once I began to get involved with things, right? It takes on a different level and sometimes that issue can be resolved instantly without any issue, without any problems. So we hear, but yet we do encourage people across the entire organization to really try to work through that protocol for result, resolving concerns. And again, this is, this is nothing different than what other places do, this is nothing different than what Wayne has done before in policy. So, no, I don't have a problem with people, you know, you can talk to whoever you want to, but if there's something going on in, in the schools, if there's something happening in classrooms, if there's something going on in buildings, we do want people to try to work through those issues at the lowest level. If there are areas or extenuating circumstances where they can't work with it at the lowest level, then we certainly can understand that and we will work with people as we always have. But that's the reason for the protocol, that's why we have it in place. And, and our desire is to see that issues get resolved as smoothly as possible. And what we've learned is that when they're handled, really at the lowest level, typically that is the case, things do resolve themselves pretty quickly, okay? The other thing that we heard was about transition concerns. Now I want to share this one. I, I heard from a number of, all the buildings I heard from. And one of the things that I heard, and I'm seeing that this is not up there Amy, is that, oh, there we go. There is some tension amongst staff that I heard as a concern. During the study, unfortunately, there were some things that people felt that were said that mischaracterized other folks from within our community. There are some staff who have shared with me very clearly, we really need to move forward as a team and really work together. We are one district and we all want to do a really good job for our students. There was some staff who says, you know, "All of our schools are changing." Some of our staff have been concerned, you know, we know, they understand that there is a school building that is actually closing, they, they get it, they understand it. But some of the staff have shared, but we all need to understand that in all of our schools, they have a change that's occurring in them. That all of our schools are going through a reconfiguration. Staff are not going to be working with some of the people that they worked with before. Schools are changing, changing all over the place. So in OP, they're gaining more students, right? That they haven't met or known before and staff. In OE, half their school is leaving and the structure is changing somewhat. And so there is change that's occurring across the entire district and people are, are sharing with me that they, they feel we need to be very sensitive to that and understand that as we continue to move forward. And really, people are saying, "We really now want to try to move together and build as a team and we really need to do that as a whole district." I also heard some things around equity, making sure that, that equity is in place, especially at the OP and the OE campus. So one of the concerns was that, you know, in one school, there are more staff than others to handle particularly special services or special programs like PE or art or music. Some of our staff are part-time, some are not. And some staff have a caseload of 23, 24 classes or 20 classes, while others have a caseload that is significantly less. And people have shared that they want to make sure that as we move forward, that equity is occurring in assignments across the district, that one group are not having more than the other. And, and we understand that and we're going to work really hard to, to even things out so that all teachers are receiving, you know, equitable caseloads. And also, the thing that I heard a lot from people is, we really need to keep kids first and whatever's happening, we just really need to make sure that's occurring. The next concern I heard was around communication. One of the things I heard was, "Dr. Kelvin, you seem disingenuous, sometimes it feels like you're listening and we feel good about what you said, but then when you leave us, it's like you keep moving ahead." And then I, I've heard that people say, you know, "Things have changed, you know, you said one thing and then things changed in a future meeting." And at our last meeting, I shared specifically one of the things that had changed from the nine sections or from the eight sections projected down to seven and I shared reasons why. You know, I, I want to be very clear, my goal is to really communicate very well with everyone that I speak to. Sometimes things will change and I, for example, like I, I talked about in the last meeting, based on enrollment, based on who's here, based on, things might change. Now, one of the things that I'm going to do a better job at and we're going to work even harder at is making sure that when things change, that we really publish that well, that we go out and make sure that people understand what's occurred, why it's occurred and, and make sure that people really know that. We are committed to making sure that people understand what's going on and what's happening. We heard that there are some communications that are unclear and incorrect, particularly in staff postings. Now, I, I have to be honest, we've had a number of postings this year because of all the reconfigurations. I have kind of researched this to really see how many staff postings were posted up wrong. What we've come up with is one, possibly two. And actually with those postings, our union leaders are here, they did sit down, if I remember correctly, with our, our human resources director and talked through that posting that needed some changes on it. I got to tell you, I know Mr. LaRush is not here, but for the number of postings and things that went on this year, to have one, possibly two things that had to be reposted, I don't think that's really bad, right? We would love to make it perfect all the time. But when he looks, when he finds a mistake or we learn a mistake, we will correct the mistake, right? So I just wanted to share about that. We have also heard that we need to have, I heard a staff member shared with me, we really need to do something around our vocabulary. The word efficiency now has very negative connotations to us. I get it, I understand that. Vocabulary is very important in, in what we do and important to me. However, sometimes I can't promise that I will never ever use the word, that word again. However, we, we understand the sensitivities around vocabulary and we can certainly work on that. We heard, we need to have more conversations like this, continue to come out, continue to talk. This is really important so that we can give you feedback, you can share with us what's going on because, you know, sometimes we're thinking things, but it's not as it is, but we don't know until we have that discourse, until we have that conversation. I, I, I agree and I am committed, we are committed, to continuing to have dialogue. We also heard that we, you know, we need to continue to, to communicate wherever possible in writing, in person, through conversation. Please know, we are committed to doing that. In your report, there is a section that shows you all of the letters that I have written out to the district since the beginning of the year. And there are numerous letters, all of the PowerPoints, there are four, that show you when I came out and did PowerPoints with staff, right? All of the information that's been out there, right? We, we're working hard on communication, right? Is it all where we wanted to be, maybe not, but we're continuing to do that. You know, as we were doing the study, we were giving everything we possibly can and there were still people who shared that they didn't think that there was enough information. We're continuing to look at ways that we can get information out there, whether it's through Facebook, Twitter, we have a super Facebook page now, I think, or something like that, whatever we can do to communicate, our goal is to do that. So we will do that through meetings, we're committed to doing it. Superdennis conference days, letters to staff, newsletters, whatever we need to do. We also have a district transition team where our goal is to communicate. So we will continue to work on this piece and I appreciate that feedback that I received through our communication. All right, transportation, we heard also about this. So I met with our transportation staff and they shared with us, you know, that they want to make sure that follow-through behavior as we move forward with changes, particularly at our middle school. So there's an assistant principal who's going to the high school and there's some dean, a dean of student going there, they shared, "Hey, we just want to make sure that, you know, if support is needed around behavior, that we get the same level of support that we've gotten in the past, which we would agree with." We heard from the transportation staff that our, our, there were some concerns about five through 12 students on the same bus, how will that go? And then we reflected back and, and shared with the staff, we currently have five through 12 graders on the buses together every single day, right? Kids coming in early for ban outside of the school day and we, we don't have significant major issues around that. So we expect that that will run and that will go very smoothly. You know, and I want to just kind of say something on this, you know, I've heard some people say, you know, "Our kids, are they going to be able to do this, is this going to be really, really tough?" One of the things that I, been very clear to me since I've been here, we have really fantastic kids, right? They do a great job, right? Are all of them perfect? No, but they are really great kids. They are very friendly to one another, they're very kind-hearted and they really do great work with each other. On the buses in the morning, currently, we don't have all of our fifth graders on the buses, but I do believe that when we go to this model, that our kids who do a great job every day are going to continue to do that. If there are challenges, we will address those challenges with those, those children. And also, there were some questions about the three o'clock bussings, will we ensure that there's enough drivers and buses? We will. Will we, one of the questions were, will we overload our buses? So the study talked about three kids in a seat, we're not doing that, right? I appreciate that feedback, but we're not doing that, right? We're not going to overload the buses. But we do know that we only have 60% capacity this year, actually a little bit less, right? And so we need to make sure we're careful about that because we can't have buses that only have 60% of the buses being filled, right? We want to try to add a little bit more to that. We know we need to have wiggle room for our kids to be able to get around, we want to be careful with the manageability on those buses as well. But we do want to make sure that we're, we're looking and keeping our eyes on the numbers. Will the Board of Education and the district back us up with the changes around the bus pass system? So some of the bus drivers did share a lot with me about, around the bus passes and asked, "Hey, if and when we do enact any changes that we do, will we receive support?" My response is, we will certainly support our staff. We know that change is a challenge, but we will certainly support staff wherever possible to make sure that things will be good. And, and I also shared on your behalf that the board is very supportive of all staff and, and they will continue to, to support our staff, all right? I hope I didn't do any, I, I'm sure that you're in agreement with that. The parking lot issue over OE, OP, some of the staff, it was a surprise to me, still had not, didn't know what were some of the changes that were coming. So we shared those, those changes with the easement, we told, told folks that we had our architect in just last week, working on some of those, those changes. And we shared what the projections are and told them that we'll be back to share more information with them around it basically. All right, and then very important piece, our secondary students. So we talked with our, I, I wanted to really talk with our secondary students because there were some things that came up in the conversations with teachers and staff and I wanted to really hear. So I met with middle school and high school students on Monday and let me tell you, great, great young people, gave me good feedback, information to hear. You know, I did talk to them about, you know, offering more courses, I, I talked to them about this idea of, you know, we had, you know, the option of offering courses, would you be interested? So there's a mix, there's some kids who say, "Yes, I want additional courses." I shared with you at the last board meeting that Mr. Pullen survey kits, over 125, 125 at least rather, have said, "Yes, we'd like to have that, that offer to us." Some of the kids said, you know, "I, I, I would like to do it, but honestly, I don't know if I want to because of the homework, right? I got other things that I'm doing in the afternoon, whether it's work, whether it's homework for some other class, so I'm not sure at this point." Some students also shared with me that they really regularly utilize advisory to assist them with homework, that it's a place that they can go and get extra help. And so they want to make sure that they get that help, that homework help is really important. Some students, I will be honest, also said that they don't take advantage of advisory. We had at least one child who shared with me that, you know, for some students, and at least in his case, and others' cases, that it's used as early release time from school. So he uses that as a time to, to, you know, kind of just have the early release. Some students shared that they would like to be also a part of future decision-making. Now, one of the things that, you know, really was eye-opening to me was that as we've moved forward, right, we don't want to lose the voice of our students. It is very important. So, you know, I would certainly welcome, as we started here, you know, I sat down and met and talked with students. And I'd like to continue that practice and they really made it clear to me that we want to make sure that we have a voice as we're moving forward and I appreciate that and I agree with that. Students shared that they are overhearing conversations from adults, whether it's from staff, whether it's from parents at home or people from the community, that, about the changes. And they, some of the students have shared, it did, it is causing them some concern. And so we want to try to resolve as many of the concerns as we can because we, some of this stuff is trickling to some of our, our children. Students shared that they are hearing about transportation changes and they're, they asked me questions about, you know, is everybody going to be in a neutral spot? Are we all going to, you know, not be able to be picked up from who, what, where and how? And I just tried to really help them to understand that that is under evaluation and we're really looking at that basically. They shared that they think that we should consider areas that certainly have no sidewalks for safety. And then they shared that they're concerned about some of the staff cuts and I shared with them, and so are we, right? We don't like to see cuts made as well. And then they mentioned that they would like for us to, to consider offering an additional foreign language course, I heard this as well, at the end of my high school meeting I heard about this. And that course was sign language, like, said, "Hey, could you think about this as you're thinking about offering more in the future?" Also had kids who talked to me about the musical at the middle school, you know, the eighth grade versus the fifth grade, who's going to get the lead role, how do we do we do that? Um and, and I had some great feedback on mentoring and supporting the fifth graders coming in. One of the kids talked to me about, can we make sure that there's an eighth grader or some older student who meets that fifth grader and who buddies with them and mentors them and supports them? They talked about their teachers who helped them with opening lockers and helped them with meeting students and how they like to make sure that that is there in place for the kids who are coming in, whether it's fifth graders, sixth, or sixth graders. They, they really shared that mentoring and that connecting with other students and with their staff is really, really important. So it was, it was great. I really have to tell you, I enjoyed talking with the kids, very eye-opening. Okay, so I shared with you themes, as I've said in the beginning of the presentation, there's a lot that we heard, there are so many things. And I tried to outline every single thing. I, I took all the notes from all of the staff and gave you everything. And staff will certainly have access to that, will be posting this information, right? There are no hidden secrets. We want to make sure that people understand that we're really looking to support wherever possible. Next steps, we're going to be meeting with our building reps very soon from all of our unions um and talking about where do we go next with the information. We will be talking about our response to the, the things that were brought up. Um and then we'll be reviewing also a different, additional scheduling ideas. As I said, I received an idea from the high school a couple of weeks ago. At the same time, I think you all received it. And then I also received an idea this morning around middle school. So we're going to spend some time uh over the next thirty days, the next month, and just have some discussions. And board, we'll be back as soon as we can to talk about next steps around scheduling. Professional development, we are now working on all the professional development offerings. We're going to make sure that we get out and support staff even more around reading, math, technology, whatever is needed, we will provide that professional development. So we'll have some things offered over the summer, some things offered before the year is out, uh some things offered when we come back. And we're going to try to really look at how we can be creative around that, uh those offerings. We're going to continue to work through our CSC meetings to ascertain the student needs uh and to make sure that people are getting what it is that they need for next year. Communication, we are, we are committed to continue to communicate in writing, in person, whatever is needed, we're going to work our best to do that. The door is always open, as I've shared since the time I've been here. We are listening, we are hearing, we're going to do our best to see what we can do to mitigate some of the concerns. The morale, one of the things I do want to work on is the morale of our staff, right? Very important um to me and I think very important with our staff. And so we're going to spend some time also um doing some brainstorming with staff on how we might continue to build. When you go through these kinds of changes, this has been a very busy year. I, I mean, there's so much that's happened this year and it's, it's been a challenge. And so what we're going to try to do is really work on how we can build relationship, uh make things a little bit better and really work on the morale with, with staff. We are going to work to include uh students again in the future uh as we talk about different transition items. We want to make sure we continue to hear from them and we're going to continue to talk. I'm going to go out. I think what's important is being visible, being out, talking, listening and responding wherever needed. Let me be clear, there are some things that as we started to put into place, um you know, I learned and I heard from some of our staff, you know, this is, may not work because of this and this may not work because of that. And there's some areas that we have actually changed or done differently based on the information that we have received. It has helped to inform some of our decision-making. Where there are areas that we can do that, we will. There are some things that we will just have to do a little bit differently than we've done before. But we certainly, we don't want people to think that because, because we don't do it the way that you said, that is not, that we're not listening. We are. Sometimes that's just not able to be done in that way. But what people are saying is important and it is something that we're going to really use to inform our decision-making. And we appreciate all of our staff. We want people to know, I want to thank all the CSCA folks, our students, our staff, our WTA leadership, they were there at every single meeting, uh sitting and talking and hearing, actually, excuse me, they were really hearing and taking notes. And uh we hope that we capitalize everything um in that full report and you'll see everything. There's no, again, hidden secrets. And I just wanted to share that. Again, we want to thank everybody for their time, very important feedback and we are using it and hearing it. Thank you. Okay, any questions from the board uh on that?
Mathis, I just want to commend you on uh the amount of transparency that is in this. As you know, I work in another district, Jeremy does, Pam did, Tim did, um Ron certainly was here uh for the majority of his life. This is not done and put out for the community in every district. And it is uh, you know, we got a preview of it and I appreciate that. I just have a couple of comments on, on what you said. As someone who is now a middle school scheduler and registrar, it is a work in progress. You put a stake in the ground, but it is not in cement until almost the week or two before school. Because once you start moving the puzzle pieces, it affects everything else. So people, I, I, I commend you with getting back to staff, working through it, taking on ideas and um just what you presented and, and the openness. I know not everybody believes that you are really open and, but you have been great with the board with this and presenting this uh hundred and some pages to us is really commendable and I thank you.
As someone who put together somewhere close to thirty-six master schedules, it's never easy to put a schedule together. And if Darlene Dietrich is still here, I would apologize to her for scheduling band and chorus at the same time. Whenever you put together a schedule, you have to make choices and sometimes those choices are, are not always good choices for the students. But you do the best you can based upon what is best for most of the students. We are changing our schedule, but we're doing it for a lot of reasons. Some of it is, is obviously because we were not able to share staff the way we wanted. But the other thing that's important is that it does provide an additional opportunities for those students who wish to take one more class. And I, I understand how much, um how much work it is and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, particularly uh for those people in the buildings, the high school teachers and middle school teachers who have argued over the merits and pros and cons. We appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Yeah, Mathis, listen, I want to first start by saying, um I don't want to turn this into a complete love fest between the board and superintendent. Listen, well, I say that because, first of all, I want to start by saying thanks to the staff for coming forward and talking to you, right? We can't um expect you to guide the district in any manner if the, if the staff isn't willing when you do open the door to come talk to you. So yes, it's wonderful that you opened the door and yes, it's wonderful that you have an open door. What's even more wonderful and what's even more better is that the staff took advantage of it and actually talked to you. So I'd like to thank the staff for doing it. I, I jotted down a bunch of notes, so I'm pretty sure this isn't going to go smoothly. I will say that on your behalf, that must have been a meat grab. You did a pretty good job of putting this together and presenting and, and, okay, you did a great job, but uh there's, there's, there's not a lot of, right, this is, there's a lot of um criticism of what's going on in here. That's really what this is. This is a hundred pages of criticism. And if we had allowed the community to do it, we'd have another hundred pages. So what you went through and what you had to listen to was tough. And I suspect it was tough for the staff to actually say some of it to you. And, and, and I, I go in that direction because it's important that not only the community that's here, and I love that we have students here, but we still have some staff that's still here, that this wasn't news, and I can't speak for the whole board and, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't assume I can. But for me, you didn't present one piece of information tonight that I didn't already know. Not one. I know, I, I put down a nice little list here. The board has closed the school. The board, by the way, that wasn't real cool, no, a lot of people didn't like that. We've downsized staff, a lot of people didn't like that. That wasn't, that was another decision that was really not popular. Oh, there's more. We've eliminated positions. Sometimes that includes teachers that are really well-known by the community and the students. That's three for three that have been really awful decisions by this board. A fourth, we've just changed a bunch of schedules. If I just listened to what you just said, staff's not real, they're not real keen on it. Some of them are, some of them aren't. But that, that is yet another kick in the teeth. And then last, although we haven't finalized this and I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but we've made some unpopular changes to the transportation policies. So by my count, that's five for five. That in the recent, call it year, two years, however long we want to say that we've been doing studies, that the board has made some pretty tough decisions. And you're the face of those decisions. And uh good for you, better you than me. But we started tonight with a story and I'm going to tell a story. It's about a student that was suspended. It, it happened while I was in school, actually. Not only was that person suspended, but they were impeached. They were aboard a class officer and they were thrown out of being the class officer. They were athletic, they did four sports a year, they couldn't do nine sports. Yeah, you aren't going to. They couldn't be in school play, although I couldn't say like, I mean, this student couldn't say. Darlene Dietrich, uh that was, it was me, by the way. I was thrown out of school play and I could do no after-school activities for my entire junior year. That was just my junior year, by the way. I had the honor of being suspended by Mr. Miller and then he's the one that handed out all of those disciplines. And they sucked. And you know what they sucked like? They sucked like these five decisions this board has just made and you're the face of it. And I guess my point is, since we started the night with the story, my story is that at the end of the day, that tough love, that, that decision that I disliked eventually led me becoming a police officer and, and, and serving in the military and serving my country and my community. I, I turned it around. And I gotta tell you, I make no mistake, especially because the staff is still here. I mean, I have no illusions, and I don't think anyone else in this board does, that what is happening right now sucks. And it's probably saying it nicely. It's the nicest word I can use. But it has to be done. It's tough love and we're going to come out of this stronger, we're going to come out of this better. And not everyone's going to buy into that, right? The next meeting, we're going to have public comment again, it's going to want to throw rotten vegetables at us. But you know what? It's not everybody. There are people out there, there are students and staff out there that do say, we are going to get through this and it is going to suck, but we will get through it. And the reason I said I don't want to turn this into a big love fest is because it's not just, hey, Mathis, thanks so much for presenting this great information to us. Yeah, you know what? Hey, thanks. But really, it's bigger than that. It's about trying to maintain some version of discipline in the community, in the staff, in the board, in the administration, and trying to get through this and progressing through it as painful as it is and coming out on the other side better than we're going to. That's my thoughts on this. Thanks.
And I, I can't compete with that. But there's one thing that um, that I heard tonight and I saw here. And I know other districts do it and I believe we used to do it, that I would like, it's not something that we can do now because it's, it's going to have to be backburnered for the, for the moment. But looking into getting a student representative back on the board, I would, I would like to look into that in the future. I mean, like I said, now I know there's so much going on, it might not be feasible right at this moment, but maybe next year sometime or in the following years, just figure out how feasible that is. Because I know there's other districts that do it and.
I believe we used to do it.
Yeah, we used to do it. So maybe bring that back, especially if it's something that the kids want.
So board, if you're in agreement, I will reach out to our attorneys and see how that process works and I'll bring that information back to you. That'll be okay. Okay. Oh, are we? I'm sorry. All right. So we're going to transition now from that report and talk a little bit about our transition calendar. Couple of things coming up. Our, in May, we know our budget vote is coming for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. We have some changes we'd like to share with you tonight, um now that the state has given to us all of their information back. We have some parent meetings that we'll talk a little bit about. Where principals will be meeting with our three through six students and also our K through two students and we want to share that information with you as well. And then the superintendent's conference day uh that's coming up, we'll talk uh as well about that. So first event that we know is happening tomorrow night, seven o'clock in the pack, Coach Boone will be here and bringing a message for us, for the entire community. We have already received over five hundred responses, so we're expecting a good-sized crowd tomorrow. And certainly we think the night's going to be great. Our kids will be doing a part in the, in the discussion at the end. One of our coaches will be helping to announce the coaches, so we're just really excited about tomorrow's activity. Seven PM in the pack. In May, we will reconvene our transition team to continue to work through next steps as, as we transition forward. And we will certainly be bringing all of those stakeholders together uh as we go to the, to forward in, in May. There are some upcoming parent meetings. Our incoming first graders will be meeting with the principal, um May eleventh from six to six forty, uh six four, to six forty-five and second graders from seven fifteen to eight at the primary school. Our incoming third and fourth graders will be meeting May eighth at six PM over at OE with the principal. And then incoming fifth and sixth graders, June fifth at six PM at the middle school. Board, some of you have expressed that you'd love to kind of go and be at part of those. More than welcome, just want to make sure that we let you know those dates. I will be at those meetings as well. And just shifting gears, our architect that was selected, King King, was here last week. They already started work on the easement project over at OP and at OE. And they will now begin the work with us for those minor repairs that we need to make over at OE and also on the easement. At our next board event meeting, we will be back to share more information. Greg, anything you want to share other than that that I?
No, just that uh we do have a couple of concept drawings based on our meeting last week that the architects came up with, uh based on our discussions. We've already shared those with Kevin Rooney, who is the head of Wayne County Highway. He is still very much on board with assisting the district. So, you know, we're moving ahead with, with that. And our plan is to have that work um started before the end of the school year and um have the, the new curb cut and entranceway, to have the majority of that done by, by June thirtieth. And then over the summer, we would concentrate on the extension of the south parking lot at OP.
All right, and, and as I've shared since our last board meeting, we've had some updates that came from the state around the budget. We are receiving a slight increase and as promised, we are recommending that we apply this amount to help reduce taxes for the community. Our new amount is forty-four million, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, three hundred and five, nine hundred and seventy-five, three, three hundred and five dollars. So we will certainly be looking at that amount as we move forward with our budget. And with your approval, we would like to move forward with our budget and with these revisions. Greg, I'll let you just kind of share the, the next information there.
Yeah, so as we stated at the last meeting, when the board adopted the budget, the state had not released the state aid figures yet. That happened shortly after the board adopted. When those numbers came out, Wayne Central did receive an additional hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars from the state. And as we had stated previously, that was applied to the tax levy for next year. So that number now stands at twenty-one million, two eighty-six, two fifteen. Previously, that number was a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars higher. What that's done um to the estimated tax rate is to drop it to, from what it was before to twenty dollars and sixty-three cents. And I stress to the board at this time, it's estimated because the only thing we know is the levy amount. The assessments and the equalization rates are not final until summertime. And those are the three parts of, of the formula, but everybody wants to know what their, you know, uh what, what the budget means to them as far as taxpayers. So it's a, tax rate is slated to go up two point four, two percent. And a hundred thousand dollar house, twenty-four dollars and fifty cent increase. Previously, it was at thirty-four fifty uh when we um shared information with you at the last meeting. Just, this is just a copy of the revenues showing you that we've changed the tax levy amount to reflect uh the additional state aid. And, you know, that all-important question, I know people are asking, well, for closing a building and um we've done some attrition with staff, why, why do we have to raise taxes? Well, if you look at the, the comparison from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, next year's budget shows us using none of our reserve money, which we cannot continue to do at the pace we were doing previously. We would be bankrupt if we continued to do that, as Dr. Tim shared. It was our hope that we would get off of that over a three-year period. When I was working with Dr. Tim's, you know, we had a timetable. Uh, we actually were able to do it in one year because the incentive that we put out there for both of our unions was well-received, and we had more people take it than, uh, than we anticipated. But, you know, next year's budget really gets us off of the one-time funding. And, and this shows you, if you look at the comparative years from the different money that we used in reserves to the money we were depending on being left over at the end of the year to apply to the next year's budget, we have significantly reduced that, which will help with our financial health moving forward. And, uh, just one last piece. Um, I noticed when we started to work on the budget newsletter, uh, Amy and I have been working on that because we gotta get it out soon. And, um, I discovered there was a, a bug in the, in the, in the BOSI's, the financial program. Previously, it had taken the twenty-seventy codes, which is in service, and on previous presentations, it showed it as an administrative, in the administrative component. That was an error, it belongs in the program component. So that has now been adjusted. It didn't change the overall budget total. It didn't even change the percentages of the three components, but I wanted to just share with the board. And that's why you have a new expenditure packet at your places, because we wanted to correct it, and if you compared one to the other, you would be able to see the differences. But it has no, no bearing on the overall total. Yes?
Taxpayers, and, uh, also, uh, in your thing that you work with Amy, the newsletter, um, is it gonna be noted that there's no bus proposition this year? That we've actually put purchasing buses of five for six hundred thousand dollars, if I remember?
Five hundred thousand's been added to the, added to the budget.
To the budget.
Correct.
So, you know, so no longer are we dependent on a budget vote to buy buses. We are just putting it as part of our, um, annual budget, correct?
Right, so we're dependent on the budget vote, we're not dependent on a separate proposition.
Right. So, you know, to, so we, we are down two, over two million dollars with the addition of five hundred thousand for buses in that budget.
Correct, that is correct.
Correct?
That is correct.
Okay, also, so Board, again, we're, we're looking to reduce, uh, because we got that extra aid in, and, and, uh, so if everyone is in agreement, and we're all good with that, then we'll, we'll go out and make sure we share that with the community. Again, our goal is to move us, it's like taking us off, you, you use all your savings account, and, and when it goes down, now you gotta use your own. So that's kinda where we're at. We're just trying to, uh, really move us from the former practice that we've been worn down, so. So we have budget presentations that are coming up, and, and here's our schedule, pretty busy. Um, we have some things happening at OE as early as Monday, um, and then throughout, uh, the next couple of weeks. And Board, any of those that you can come to, we'd love to see you there. You all have been very supportive at those, and we just wanna share with you the, the dates that we've gotten back and some of the... Uh, we're still getting some information back from some of our other community groups. We're trying to just get out as much as we can. So those are the upcoming budget presentations. Uh, we will have our, our budget hearing next week, here at our, our board meeting at seven o'clock, and we'll certainly share all this information with the community during those times. Any questions around that presentation calendar, Board? Or, or the presentation around the budget? Everybody okay? All right. And I also wanna share with you, as, as Tim has already kinda pointed out, yesterday we had our, uh, third strategic planning meeting of the year. A year ago, we started the strategic planning process, uh, and we made a couple revisions to the plan. Uh, the group reviewed progress that has been made. And at a future board meeting, we will come back and share the progress. I have to tell you, um, what an impressive, uh, meeting yesterday. Um, you know, sitting and listening of the progress and things that we've, that we've been able to address in this year, even in the midst of all the things that have been going on. Board, I think you'll be very pleased to hear, um, from our stakeholders, how things, um, have been going. Everything from our technology program to, um, our scope and sequence to, you know, curriculum advancements, um, and just a number of areas that we are working on. So we'll be back, uh, not the next board meeting, but one before we get to June, and we'll share with you, um, progress from that strategic planning piece that took place, okay? Questions about any portion of the, of the reported all tonight, Board? Everybody okay? Okay, so with that said, um, you know, there's some things on the, on the agenda with regard to board business. There is, uh, you know, the candidate for the Finger, Wayne Finger Lake's BOSI's board, that does need to be voted on tonight. Uh, there's some approval of policies, um, the extra correct, uh, classroom corrective action piece from the, um, audit committee. Uh, then there's a piece around, uh, Greystone Golf, uh, that also needs, uh, approval. And then, Amy, if you could just go to the next slide, and we can come back to those two. Um, in terms, I'm also recommending approval of the treasures report, um, personnel action, the property tax report card, BOSI's cooperative bid, uh, the health service contract with East Rochester. You, uh, went, like, one more, Amy, if you can go back. And then the health service contract with, with East Rondacote Central School District. Um, and then Board, also, there are some CSE, CSE recommendations, audit committee meeting minutes, appointments of school election personnel, and the board of education meetings from our last board event meeting.
Okay, Gordon?
All right, thank you. All set. Thank you, gentlemen, folks. And Michelle, thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
At this time, we'd like to take a short break in any schools or areas where, where they were signed for a fellowship. If you come up, any board member will sign this for you, and thank you for sitting here. Keep you from the board, and I will leave at two thirty-five PM. All right, it's time to board, we've been through the action items, list that on our agenda. First up, and then we'll go through the slow so we get it right. Um, we have the Wayne Finger Lake's BOSI's board candidates in budget vote. So this year, there's three candidates for three spots, so I'm just gonna read their names off, and then we can vote for all three at the same time. If that's okay with everybody? Okay? Um, so the candidates are Nancy Shear from, um, School District Residency, Pam Morgan, Romulus, and Michael Ellis, Geneva. Um, so I need a motion to approve those three candidates. Jeremy, second, Matt. All right? Any discussion? All in favor? In the poll? Thank you. All right, the second part will be, um, approving the two thousand seventeen eighteen tentative administrative budget, part one of the Wayne Finger Lake's Board of Cooperative Educational Services in the amount three lane, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Need a motion? Carla, second, Ron. Any discussion? All in favor? In the poll? Thank you. Do we do that already, Kim? Well, it's not done? Okay?
All right, um, next, I need a motion to approve the second reading and approval for policy fifty-one ten, budget planning and development, and policy fifty-one thirty, budget adoption. Pam, second, Phil. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next, I need a motion to approve the extra classroom corrective action plan two thousand fifteen sixteen. Dennis, second, Carrie. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Last, I need a motion to approve the Greystone Golf resolution. Matt, second, Phil. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, now, as we move on to the consent agenda, I think you already mentioned what was on there. Is there any highlights that you would need to add or... Okay. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Carla, second, Carrie. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Moving on, uh, committee reports, um, Audit Committee, Matt?
Yeah, we had a... We had our meeting, uh, April thirteenth, and, uh, we went over, uh, claims out of their March logs. Uh, nothing of significance there, everything was discussed and settled out. Update on the internal audit for payroll, and that'll be coming out in September. And, uh, let's see, extra classroom audit, which we, uh, just approved and accepted. Uh, the corrective action plan, we took care of that, and cleared out a few outstanding items. Uh, so that was it. That's it for this school year, and, uh, we're adjourned until September.
All right, thank you. Carrie, Policy and Wellness Committee?
Wellness, the next meeting is May ninth at two PM. And just a reminder that the Districtwide Relay for Life is scheduled for June second. Um, at this point, um, we can start signing up online and raise funds, we can make a team, um, something people in the community can look at on the website as well. Um, policy, tonight was our last meeting of the year. We won't be reconvening again until September. Um, we went over the following policies. Fifteen ten, regular board meetings and rules. Fifty-five twelve, reserve funds. Fifty-five seventy, financial accountability. Fifty-five seventy-two, audit committee. Seventy-two twenty-two, diploma or credential options for students with disabilities. And seventy-five thirty, child abuse and maltreatment. All of those were just, uh, language changes from the state to reply with regulations. Um, we also, at the request of the Audit Committee, had to review policy fifty-two twenty regarding the external audit report. We needed to have some compliance language put in there regard, on the district investments, so that was also applied tonight. All of those will be going into first reading for our next meeting. Um, we went back... We went back and re-reviewed the wellness policy, as mentioned a few meetings ago. After we had completed our policy and almost had it approved, the state came and sent out an entire new policy. Dr. Calvin and Nikki Wilson went through it, and we now have what we need and what the state needs in a good policy. And that'll be coming also back for first read. Policy 5732, we had just, from our attorneys, just some legal language on video cameras and disabling the audio recordings. And that is per law. And finally, I'm going to have Dr. Calvin just go over the details specifically. We went back and went over Policy 5710, Transportation, and Policy 5720. We had lengthy discussion tonight. We had Fred Prince and Greg Atzepp in there as part of transportation. We went over it, and it also pertains to some of what Dr. Calvin was talking about tonight in his report under Transportation. So I will let him continue with what the Policy Committee has decided.
Thank you, Carrie. So we did talk tonight as a committee about some of the proposed changes. We are aware that there are some in the community who are expressing some concerns around some of those changes. So we were looking at a number of things that we're now reconsidering, thinking about. One of the items that we know that we're going to try to just slow down a little bit on involves the centralized locations and spots. We need to have our consultant come in and work with Fred and our group to try to really look through that. So some of the things that we had on that policy, we won't be able to enact. We won't plan to enact this year. But there's some other things that we're looking at as a committee. And we're going to come back and kind of really try to look at the past system. We'll come back and think about the number of places that kids can go to when they get, when school ends. We certainly heard loud and clear from the community, and we are going to kind of come back and reconvene and discuss those. So some things we heard before, Rome wasn't built in a day. So some things we're going to slow down a little bit on and really think through, and we'll be back, basically. I hope I expressed that well. Okay.
And on those two, on those policies, we have to bring them back to the attorneys with some of our concerns to put some language in. So they won't be ready for, because our meeting is next week, to put in. But once we get the language back from the attorneys on what we are looking for to best meet the needs of both the policy and just the district and the community's needs, we'll bring them back forward and just to the board again. So, that's all.
Okay, thanks. All right, move on. Board President Comment. Just want to go back to the strategic planning that we had yesterday. It was 8:30 to, just before 3:00 in Casey Park, meeting room behind the offices down there. There was over 30 people, stakeholders there from all different levels in community and teaching staff, administrators, just working together on the last policy we had of where we came from and where things were, and kind of revisiting what was the most important now, what things were needed to work on, and where we were at on some of the things we did. And the consultant that we used for that is incredible at getting things done, and he has the equipment that helps do it quickly. And the things, a lot of the things were, it's in a chart, and I suggested maybe he come give us a presentation. That would be, you know, help the board see that. But there were some things that, there's an ideal graph of where it should be as a district. And last year, we had things over to the right, and everything kind of moved to, almost exact to be ideally what things were working on. And he was amazed that, because we had 10 things on there as priorities and importance and what we're doing. And we ended up removing one yesterday that seemed to be a consensus that we didn't need to do anymore. And some things got shifted around. But he was amazed that we did as much as we did in a year. He said some districts, they only have like seven things, and they might only get one of them done. So I thought it was, you know, a real compliment to the planning team and the leadership that Dr. Calvin did for the things that we got accomplished this year. And there were subcommittees, and they didn't work. They moved some things that were at the bottom all the way to the top and got them going as a real plan. So that, you know, you kind of looked at things as how they were, how good they were right now, how you felt about them, where we were at as a district, and they moved significantly. So I think that'll be a good presentation if he is coming to do that, or maybe even our committee people could come do that presentation and just show you the work that was done. And that's what's guiding our decisions. I mean, it was most important. Like I said, it shows the scores of what we got and different levels and things like that. So that was a great, great meeting. So, all right, that's all I have.
Pam, can you just elaborate a little bit more on the strategic plan, in case this goes to video and someone watches it all the way to the end and wonders what the strategic plan is? I know it's on our website, but some people may not know what it is.
Well, it's things that want to guide us of what's important for the district to do as far as, like, the number one thing that came out with students with disabilities, and that our scores are not where they want to be, and what, how we're going to, you know, we need to put resources there. We need to put a plan in action and how we're going to get there. And that could be a subcommittee, that could be the administration work with a group, whatever way it comes out, the important things that we need to do, and make sure we plan to do that and allocate resources. So like, when we do our budget, this is important. You know, the stakeholder said this is what we need to, need to work on and focus on. And it gives you different levels, the top priorities, something of concern, and then things that we do already that fundamentally we'll keep doing, given the resources, you know, that we need to do, plan for it in the budget, the attention from whoever has to work on that. So we'll get more on the presentation, okay?
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to enter into executive session, discuss the performance of a particular staff member, negotiations, a student's record, and a matter that affects security. Ron, second. Jeremy, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.